Please evacuate the building. Did you do that Shane?
Yes, I did. Just for you Bob, just for you.
It's six thirty Jim, isn't it?
Now it is.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome ladies and gentlemen to Burlington City Council Meeting Number Two, January sixteenth, two thousand twelve at six thirty. The Thomas J. Smith Council Chairs. Before we start, I'd like to say that we're experimenting with the sound system. So when you come up to speak, you don't have to lean into that microphone. I think you should be able just to stand there like a normal person and see how it goes. Okay? We're gonna try that too. We're ready for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call please Kathleen.
Reed.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Davidson.
Here.
Fleming.
Here.
McCambeau.
Here.
First item on our agenda, as is usual, is a consent agenda. All matters listed under Item One consent agenda haven't been discussed or considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion desired, then that item will be removed and consent agenda will be considered separately. On the consent agenda tonight, we have the usual finances and miscellaneous, beer, liquor, wine, cigarette licenses, reports and bonds. We have a resolution approving final acceptance of release of retention monies for the two thousand eleven hot mix asphalt resurfacing project. And we're setting the date for public hearings on February sixth for the vacation of an alley from Division to Elm and to sell the property at three sixteen Summer Street. Those are public hearings on February sixth. Is there anyone from the audience who'd like to have any of these items removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, council, do you have any?
Nope.
None your honor.
Okay, entertain a motion.
Okay. A motion to approve all listed under Item One consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Kathleen?
Reed.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambeau.
Aye.
And the motion is carried. Next, we have a presentation from Mr. Harlan Yoder, who's the First District Commander of the American Legion concerning veterans services. So, Mr. Yoder, the podium is yours.
Thank you Mayor Davidson and the council for allowing me to address you tonight. My name is Harlan Yoder and I am the commander of the American Legion First District. There are nine districts of the Department of Iowa in the American Legion. And the First District is comprised of the southeast eleven counties. The Burlington Post Commander was supposed to have been with me, but he had to take his flight to Cedar Rapids, which was a five o'clock departure this morning. And since he's about eighty, I think he's pretty well done in. So he won't be with me tonight.
Eighty's not so old.
I'll let you know when I get there.
I can tell you about it.
First of all, are there any veterans on the city council?
Yep.
Are you a Legionnaire or do you belong to?
I'm just a veteran.
No, no veterans organization.
Air Force.
Well, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Yes Bob, thank you.
Purpose of my visit tonight is to inform you of the proposed revitalization for local post fifty-two. The American Legion is a mutual aid organization of veterans of the United States Armed Forces chartered by the United States Congress. It was founded to benefit those veterans who served during a wartime period as defined by Congress. The American Legion was founded in nineteen nineteen by veterans returning from Europe in World War One and later chartered under Title Thirty-Six of the United States Code. The organization is based on four pillars of service. First is Veterans Affairs and Rehabilitation. This is to assure access to VA care, secure funding and staffing for the VA system, promote employment and business opportunities, support the GI Bill through which our veterans can further their education, and to pay respects to our fallen comrades with military rights and escorts from the Legion Riders. The Legion Riders along with the Patriot Guard are instrumental in keeping the protesters like the Westboro Baptist Church from interrupting service and causing further emotional distress to the families of our fallen. The second pillar is national security. The American Legion supports strong national defense and homeland security. The Legion has established programs like Operation Troop Support and Comfort Warriors. The American Legion is instrumental in disaster preparedness as well. American Legion Post in Parkersburg is one of the few buildings left standing after the tornado four years ago and served as the headquarters for the relief effort. The American Legion also maintains support for the full accounting of POW and MIA's from all wars. The third pillar is Americanism. The Legion is a strong supporter of Flag Protection Amendment, voter registration and participation, Boy Scouts, Boy State, Junior Shooting Sports and Oratorical Competition amongst other programs. Children and youth is the last pillar. Family Support Network, Temporary Financial Assistance, Child Welfare Foundation. So what does the American Legion do in the community? You may be aware of the American Legion Baseball. This is the oldest program of the American Legion. Some of the more famous participants include Hall of Famers George Brett, Steve Carlin, Harmon Kilbrew and Ted Williams amongst others. Boy State started nineteen thirty-five and I didn't know until I started doing some research on another project that the Legion is nonpartisan, but they're very political. The Boys and Girls State Camps started in response to socialist youth camps that sprang up during the thirties. So that was kind of news to me. In Iowa, five hundred or more boys from across the state and sponsored by their local Legion Post participate in a week-long camp to learn about our form of government and our political system. Other Legion programs include the high school oratorical contest, Junior Shooting, fifth grade flag essay contest, Eagle Scout of the Year, Law Enforcement Officer of the Year and Educator of the Year. Approximately six years ago, in response to extended and repeat deployments by our National Guard and Reserves, Operation Troop Support was created. This program gives the troops and families contact information for whatever help they may need during deployment. This information is given out at yellow ribbon ceremonies prior to deployment. So if any problems arise, they will know where to go for help. This may be as simple as a non-starting lawnmower, plumbing and heating problems, up to threatened eviction, which has happened in Des Moines. Temporary financial assistance is available where minor children are involved. This can help a family where there are unmet needs for food, shelter, medical or utility expenses. Offered Operation Comfort Warriors provides items not normally given by the government such as books, DVDs, calling cards and electronic games to our wounded military personnel. The Legacy Scholarship Fund was established for an opportunity for higher education to the children and parents who've been killed while serving our country. To date, three million dollars have been raised largely by the American Legion Riders. The ultimate goal is a twenty million dollar endowment to sustain this program. Locally, post fifty-two participates in the Boy State Program by sending campers and volunteers at Camp Dodge during the week while the camp is running. The post also performs military honors for its fallen members and any other veteran in the community who is not a member. Memorial Day Services and Veterans Day Services are also conducted by the local post. There are times when membership in a local post has declined and interest in programs is low to nonexistent. A revitalization effort can help energize and breathe life into a post so that the post can become viable again. Did you stop to think what an active American Legion post means to a community or how much the veterans and youth are being shortchanged if there isn't one? No service officer to help with claims or hospitalization or death benefits. No high school students at Boy State or participating in other Legion programs. Most importantly, no place for veterans to make themselves heard. So this is why the American Legion is coming to town and with the help of the department and district leadership, we intend to revitalize the local post. This is the sixth revitalization effort in Iowa. The intent is for each district to revitalize a post and then help other districts with their program. The local post is a good news, bad news situation in that membership and program participation has declined over the last fifteen years, which is kind of department-wide and countrywide. It's not just the Legion that's hurting, so are the AMVets and the VFW. The department's assessment is that the local post needs a little boost, not a total makeover. So that's why we're looking at coming in for a couple of days when three or four is normal. This time, I'd like to share with you what we propose to do on February first and second. We will, on the first, we'll meet with Commander Foster and selected post members to help with the membership for the year. We'll be going door-to-door, talking only to known veterans, no cold calls. This will be performed by myself, Ken Rockholtz, District Commander for the last two years, who is my membership chairman and District Vice Commander Bob Kennedy. The first is also the regular meeting night, so we'll have a meeting with the post membership. And we will be doing, the morning on the second, we'll be doing the morning radio show on KBR with Mark Morris, Department Programs Director Kathy Nace, Past Department Commander Jerry Seben and Department Service Officer Rich Anderson will participate along with myself. And if we have time, we'll continue to work the membership from the previous day. In the evening, there will be an open house at the Memorial Auditorium Thursday evening from five to eight. Department personnel will be available to answer questions about programs, claims or entry into the VA system. I'd like to read a letter. I spoke to the mayor briefly before the meeting started. Hawkeye Attention Letter to the Editor. On January sixteenth, your mayor and city council is addressed by the local American Legion Post Fifty-two here in Burlington. The district and local officers that were present are encouraging community support for revitalization efforts so that they can continue to do the great things that we as a patriotic community may have taken for granted. The revitalization will take place on February first and second, two thousand twelve. While being a member of the local American Legion Post Fifty-two is beneficial to the military veterans in Burlington, it is equally important that we bring to them the support as a community that is proud of their service to our country. We count on them to raise the flag at our home football games, perform honors for their fallen comrades and their families, seek out and give scholarships and awards to our youth through programs such as American Legion, Boy State and Flag Essay Contest. Most of all, be a solid unified voice on issues that protect this great land. American Legion Post Fifty-two members along with state and district officers will be on hand for an open house on Thursday, February second, from five to eight PM. They will have a state service officer present as well as a Des Moines County Veterans Affairs Representative who are prepared to answer any benefit and claim issues our brave veterans may be facing. I would encourage all military veterans to stop in for refreshments and visit with your fellow comrades and maybe even volunteer your services in some small way so they may continue to be the asset that we have come to appreciate in Burlington. And sincerely, Jim Davidson, Burlington Mayor. I guess I would like to have an announcement or I will send the poster publicizing the open house. I was wondering if we could get that on, be any problem to put that on the public access station?
I don't think that's a problem, is it? We can do that?
Send that to the clerk then. Okay. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. And do you have any questions?
I just want to thank you for your good work. So thank you for your presentation sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, oh, go ahead, sure. Okay, there you go sir, thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions to Mr. Yoder?
I don't.
Okay. Thank you sir. Now we have time for consideration and plans and specifications for two thousand twelve Crystal Drive Reconstruction. Mister City Manager.
Right, and we have Ryan Thornburg, the City Engineer, to speak on that.
Thank you. Here to discuss the Crystal Drive Reconstruction project we have coming up. The project is to, for the complete reconstruction of the eleven-hundred-foot of the Crystal Drive subdivision, or Crystal Drive cul-de-sac north of Florence Avenue. The new street will be twenty-seven foot wide and it'll be a six-inch-thick PCC pavement, which is typical of our reconstructions. It'll have a newly in-place sub-base and improved sub-grade with sub-drains to allow the water to get away from underneath. Our intention due to the extended construction period and the length of it is to phase the project in two different phases. One being the reconstruction of the cul-de-sac itself and the second being the reconstruction of the mainline paving. In addition, we plan to offer an incentive to the contractor with a cap of ten thousand dollars for early completion of the construction. The construction schedules roughly plan to be seven weeks. It's been budgeted that two-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand dollars is available for the project. We estimate that the constructional cost are around two-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand. The plan is to receive bids on February twenty-second and for the council to award contract on March fifth with the construction being this spring or summer. Are there any questions from the council?
The street's in bad shape and needs to get done.
We agree.
Okay. Is there anyone from the audience who has a question or comment concerning this project? Ryan, could you let Stan come up to the podium and please?
Stand first?
No, you're up Stan.
Stan Strad, putting in an eye on Shamrock Drive. I would just wonder if the homeowners have to incur any of this cost? Is the city paying for it?
This is a city-funded project.
Because?
Because it's a city street and it's our normal.
But isn't any street in the city, city street?
It's in the five-year plan, right Steve? Is that what we're doing? Yes.
Normally, don't the homeowners have to incur some of this? You want something paved or replaced?
No, it's already a paved street. It's just redoing the street.
Okay. Just for my information, my street's getting bad too.
Okay. Thank you Stan. Anyone else? Steve?
I didn't plan on being up here twice tonight, but it's such an exciting agenda, I couldn't resist. Really excited just-
We need a name and-
Steve Zager, fifty-seven sixty-four Flint Crest Drive.
Thank you.
I think it's, I'm glad to see they're redeveloping that, I mean, that street because it does need repair badly. There's another issue right down the road there for a property owner named John Reinsman about water. I'd like to take this opportunity to have, to meet with the city engineer and talk about what we could do about redirecting some of that water. And I don't know the answer to it, but I think it'd be a great time to start talking about things like that. So I'd like to pass that suggestion.
I'm sure they'd be glad to visit with you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the audience? Seeing none, we need a motion then please.
Motion to close.
We have a motion to close and second the public hearing. Kathleen?
Reed.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambeau.
Aye.
The public hearing is closed. We need a motion.
We have a resolution approving plans and specifications for the two thousand twelve Crystal Drive Reconstruction.
Second.
Okay, do we have any comments, council? Okay, we have a motion to second. Are you ready Kathleen?
Yes. Reed.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambeau.
Aye.
The motion is approved. Now we have a consideration of the sale of property locally known as six-twenty-one North Tenth Street, City of Burlington, Des Moines County.
And Eric Kinsland is here to talk about that.
Okay Eric.
Thank you. This is one of the properties the city acquired through the court system. It's an abandoned property and we've had one offer on it for a minimum bid, purchase the home and redevelop the home, rehab the project. It is located on North Tenth Street on the west side of North Tenth, between High and Court Street. And it's a home that otherwise probably wouldn't be on our demolition list and removed that way. So hopefully that individual that is looking to purchase the property can rehab it and get it back in the tax rolls and a substantial property again. So.
Okay. Counsel, do you have questions?
Barry? I'm just glad he's doing it.
Amen. Anyone from the audience wish to speak on this issue? Seeing none. We need a motion to close.
A motion to close.
Second.
Okay Kathleen?
Reed.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambeau.
Aye.
The hearing is closed. Now we have a motion.
Resolution approving sale of property locally known as six-twenty-one North Tenth Street, City of Burlington, Des Moines County, Iowa.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, council? Okay Kathleen?
Reed.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambeau.
Aye.
Okay, he's a homeowner. All right. Next, we have an ordinance.
Your Honor, I have a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance rezoning the property located at twenty-seven forty Mount Pleasant Street, otherwise known as Fairway Center, from C-two General Commercial to M-one Light Industrial Zoning District.
Second.
Any change?
There have been no changes since the first reading.
Anyone from the audience wishing to speak to this issue?
Leon Chehan, eighteen-twenty-one Mount Pleasant Street. I'm sure you know what my opinion of these projects are, but I'm gonna repeat it again. And I'll be short-sweet this time. As long as we continue to subsidize poverty wage employers-
Wait, you're not speaking to the right issue right now.
This is part of the same plan.
This is the ordinance rezoning the property. That's what we're talking about.
Then I'll talk about it from the other standpoint. I'm against it because it's gonna increase my taxes directly or indirectly.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Counsel, what's your pleasure? What would you like to do?
I am too.
Do we want to proceed with waiving of this to go to the third?
Yes, I think we should.
We'll figure that out if you make the motion.
So I have a motion to amend, to amend the motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of the ordinance rezoning property located at twenty-seven forty Mount Pleasant Street, Fairway Center, from C-two General Commercial to M-one Light Industrial Zoning District to read as follows. For waiver of preliminary consideration of adoption of the second reading and for final adoption of an ordinance rezoning the property located at twenty-seven forty Mount Pleasant Street, Fairway Center, from C-two General Commercial to M-one Light Industrial Zoning District.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have an amendment. We need a vote on the amendment first Kathleen?
Yes. Reed.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambeau.
Aye.
We have a motion amended on the floor. Any discussion?
Nope.
Okay Kathleen?
Reed.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambeau.
Aye.
And the motion as amended is passed. We have a resolution to take up now. Mr. Fleming?
Resolution of the City of Burlington, Iowa, authorizing the city council to execute applications and agreements related to state and local programs to assist Weingard Company in the expansion of its Burlington, Iowa plant.
Do we have a second?
Second Dan.
Thank you. Dan, do we have anything to be said about that?
I'll explain it as best I can. I'm sure if they have questions, Jason from the chamber is here to answer those. But it's basically going into an agreement. It's a TIF area that we've allowed a TIF agreement in this resolution here. And the money used from that TIF will be used for the city's match for a jobs bill that they want to execute also. It's the same thing you've done in the past with Case and Champion or Federal Mogul also. So basically, it's a little different than what you've seen in the past. This one allows for no upfront money by the city, really no risk to the city at that point for that. It's based on the increment, or the taxing as it goes on. And I believe you've read it, the first five years is seventy-five percent, the second five years at fifty percent. Kind of it in a nutshell. And if there are any more elaborate questions than that, I guess I'll have to defer to Jason.
Okay. Are there any questions, comments from the audience? Maybe we should go there first.
Eric Renteria, nine oh seven High Street. Just a couple of thoughts on this one. First, I think it's a great project. Where my concern comes in is in the lack of a limit to the city's exposure in terms of the tax rebate that's being made available through the program. It's been suggested by Mr. Hutchinson that the cost, additional cost in taxes on this project would be somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred thousand dollars. In light of that, you know, I guess what I would, I have not seen in the paperwork for this meeting anywhere that suggests what the actual dollar figure may be. And so while it's represented that this cost is going to be roughly seventy-five thousand dollars a year to the city, what I would suggest is that is that the city take some type of a stopgap measure to limit the amount of tax dollars that go into the project. Because the perception that's created amongst the public today is that this is about a seventy-five thousand dollar, five-year risk and then in the subsequent five years, about fifty thousand dollars. And I'm concerned that the actual dollars of this project over that ten-year life will be significantly greater than that.
Thank you.
And can I speak to that too a little bit Eric?
Sure.
It is not a set dollar amount, it's a percentage, seventy-five percent, the rebate, and then we get twenty-five percent. So if that dollar amount goes up, our twenty-five percent goes up.
I understand that.
And so, you know, I guess whatever amount it's worth, if it goes up, it's a larger amount to the city too. I like, I really like it and think that it was, you know, a great idea to do it as a rebate because they could have asked for money upfront. And I have some other questions of Jason, I guess, too.
And I think the structure of it is outstanding. I thought it was a very creative solution. Where my concern came in is that when I, if you look at, if you look at eighty-three thousand dollars of taxes on a one-point-five-million-dollar property, you are looking at about a five-point-five percent effective rate for taxation. Now if you run those same numbers on the projected input on this project, which goes up to around fifteen million dollars, it's a multiple of ten. The tax rate of five-point-five percent turns out to be about eight-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars a year. The question that I think I'm really putting before council is whether or not it is in the fiscal best interest of the citizens to put millions of dollars into Fairway Center on behalf of a private citizen as opposed to hundreds of thousands. And so it's really a matter of scale and degree and understanding and representing to the people of Burlington an accurate depiction of what this tax rebate is. Because even in the paper today, it suggested that the increase in value of the property, even though I think they were, they said it wrong, the increase in value of the property was a hundred thousand dollars. Well, the increase in value of that property is going to be in the scale of millions, not a hundred thousand dollars. And so I think it is important that the people of Burlington understand what their contribution to this project is. And more fundamental to that is that the city needs to be working with the state to lower tax rates for everybody. Because- Because multimillion-dollar tax rebates are available to the very few, not to the many. And so while this is a great project, you know, it is important that the citizens of Burlington understand that they're going to be contributing millions of dollars to this project, not $100,000. And that's a big difference.
There's a couple of things that I'd like to mention. First of all, you use the term cost, and it's not really a cost. It's actually going to be an increase in tax revenues to Burlington. It's not going to be a cost to Burlington. And secondly, the monies, the tax revenues are coming from Weingard Company. They're not coming from the citizens of Burlington. This is the Weingard Company's project. They're the ones that are going to be paying the taxes, and they're the ones who are going to get the rebate from the taxes that they paid in, not the citizens of Burlington.
No, I understand that, and...
Well, I don't think people from the audience would have understood that based on what your comments were.
Well, what also needs to be understood along with that is that every community has a certain amount of commercial and industrial taxes that offset taxes for the people who live in that community. When a business operates in that community, you take example, West Burlington, with all the commercial development that's occurred there compared to the number of residential properties, their tax base is substantially lower than that of Burlington. And so by giving a tax rebate to our commercial and industrial partners, it does cause private citizens' residential tax rates to be higher. So it's a complicated issue.
I don't agree with you there.
I don't either.
I think you're missing, you're misconstruing.
Well, I don't think I am.
But there's another, there's another point that's misconstrued, too, that you used the number, the 5.5% or whatever, and then you took that number. But you have to remember, we're talking about the incremental, so that the $83,000 baseline, you have to subtract that out of there before you even begin to calculate what the rebate might be.
All right, when you take the, when you take the effective rate of $83,000 on a $1.5 million property and extrapolate it excluding the $83,000, it works out to almost $4 million over the life of the project. So my numbers aren't astray.
Well, that's not the numbers that I got.
That's way too high.
That's way too high.
And actually, I would have assumed that it is higher, and I redid those numbers at a $5 million, a $10 million, and a $15 million level to try to get a basis for what those taxes are going to be. But I guess my point is that it's not, it's not $100,000. It's substantially, the contribution on the part of the cities is...
Eric, I have a question for you. If we don't approve this and they don't go through and this project falls because of this, and then there's 71 jobs that aren't created for the community that are averaging out about $16.29 per hour, where does that look negative on it? And who does that fall upon?
As I said in the beginning, I'm not opposed to the project, but I just think it's real important that the citizens of Burlington understand what their contribution to the project is. And so really, that's my point, is that, is that I think it's important that the council take the time to assess what the impact is and understand, which I know you do, I'm speaking to the choir here, but understand that the complete fiscal benefits to the citizens of Burlington are what we're talking about.
Exactly, which makes this an outstanding project.
I agree.
And Eric, in my profession, I, part of my time, I have to analyze publicly traded companies. This is a privately held company. But when companies look to locate, they look for low utilities, they look for incentives from, I mean, ABC Company, don't call it Weingard, I mean, ABC Company comes to Burlington and they want, they want the city to show some support. This particular project, the way it is set up, we don't have to put any money upfront. Our citizens aren't, I think you're confusing the citizens by some of your statements. Our citizens are not costing anything, this is not costing them anything. West Burlington does have a cheaper rate. They use a lot of TIF financing, more than we do.
They're hilarious.
So I feel like this is kind of going the other way. This is going to add additional money to what we will have available, and so I want to make that clear to people.
And I think communities like West Burlington, if the State of Iowa continues to look at the commercial tax rebate, West Burlington is going to suffer because they have a higher commercial rate. And so then their property taxes have to go up on the personal side.
Right, and I think you're making my point, that when the, when the commercial taxes impact the residential tax rates, the residential tax rates are lower. And so, you know, the, what the city is losing is a potential several million dollars worth of tax revenue that could be used to offset residential property taxes.
How do we lose what we don't have?
No way.
We don't have that. We, you know, do we want, you know, I don't know. I would have this question, I don't know if Jason knows it, but I know that, I noticed that Weingard came up with a new product about a year and a half ago, and I thought they were looking at manufacturing that in China. And when I heard that they were going to do this plant here, I was very proud of the fact that somebody from our city or a company in our city would put jobs in Burlington and not take it to China. And maybe they have, maybe they're doing some in China, too, but I was very glad to hear that they were doing this.
I agree. I, like I said in the beginning, I think it's a good project, but I just think it's important that we, the citizens of Burlington understand the actual contribution that they're going to be asked to be made to this project. And over the life of that 10 years...
Eric, they're not. You're misleading people here.
I don't think that, well, we can agree to disagree. If you, if you, if you tax that property without the rebate over the full 10 years versus the rebate, those tax dollars are being contributed back to Weingard and Company.
Absolutely, but why not?
It's not a matter of why or why not. It's a matter of the way that it's presented and making sure that everyone understands what we are contributing to that process.
That's fine. I appreciate it. Thank you for your comments.
You bet.
I did some calculating, and Jason, you can tell me if I'm correct or not, but assuming this comes back at a $5 million assessment, it all depends, the reason it's a moving number is because we don't know what is going to end up being assessed by the county assessor. If it's a $5 million assessment, it would be rebated roughly $95,000 back to Weingard Company and the TIF. That's my calculations, assuming that the tax rate is still $42 in Des Moines County. Jason, do you have anything you want to add on this to clarify for us here?
Sure, well, this, it could go a number of areas, but I know, Jason Hutchinson with the Greater Burlington Partnership, and with me tonight is Dennis Hinkle with the partnership and Ed Spicer from Weingard. And I'll just maybe reiterate some of the comments I made last week and then get into some specific issues. But this project is absolutely economic development, and this is the exact type of project that communities all over the Midwest, particularly our size in the rural Midwest, would aggressively pursue. And because it's a local company, sometimes we could take those things for granted. And I want to be sure that the folks in this community don't do that. Couple of things worth noting, I think, is that this is, it's a redevelopment project, so it is taking an area that today has vacancy and is underutilized and rehabilitating the entire area. It is about job creation, 70, 71 jobs are estimated, and about $15 million in capital investment. And it's also what we call a primary sector company, which means it's importing dollars into the community. So exporting a product and importing dollars. And I think that's very important because those are the types of projects that increase the wealth within a community. So the requests before you tonight are to approve a resolution and support because the state is not going to fund a project that does not have support of the local community. And then, and then second is the city's contribution into the project, and those two things then authorize the mayor to sign agreements. With respect to the value of this, and that's why I always hesitate to throw out numbers because they stick and it was intended to be used for discussion. So I think the context of my remarks were, you know, could the value increase and the net increase in taxes be $100,000 a year? I certainly think so. Could they be more? Well, I think we all would hope that they would be. And just another thought, the way that this is structured in terms of the TIF rebate and based upon a percentage, is it does not discourage, a cap could discourage investment, right? Because, all right, if I'm capped at that, I might, you know, tend to limit the investment in a project. It also represents new incremental dollars to the community on day one of taxable value for that, for that property. So as soon as the increase in value comes on the books, new dollars come to the city. Sure, a portion of that will then be rebated to the company, then on day one, new tax revenues used for the city for other projects. So that was kind of a walkthrough, and, you know, I'd be happy to take questions.
The only thing that I'm really wrestling with, and at first, I did think that it was quite a commitment of money that we were spending. I'm not a businessman, so I didn't realize what it does take to get business, and it takes incentive. That's common sense. I'm all down for development. My only issue with this deal, my biggest issue, after everything is said and done, because I still think it is a good deal ultimately, is you're not doing a new development, you're doing a redevelopment. And I just think that there needs to be a commitment from the city or, you know, from the chamber that with these old businesses, even though this is going to bring in all this new business, I just don't think that that's progress and that's doing any good if we can't keep all of those old businesses, if we don't have a place for them to go. So I'm just curious about that and what's going to happen with these old businesses. Because I'm really not for any type of development that's going to close down a old business. I just don't think that's a good way to do business. That's just me. But outside of that, I'm, I'm for the development. I think it's, I think it is ultimately a good deal. But I want somebody to tell me, where's the commitment with these, with these other businesses?
Well, that's a great question, if you're asking me to respond. And certainly, I would, I would agree with you as the Greater Burlington Partnership for Business Association, and we certainly hope that every business that might be impacted by this and may have to relocate would have a successful transition. Projects such as these, any type of landlord-tenant arrangement has a contract, and those contracts expire and perhaps they can be renegotiated. So by this deal moving forward, that doesn't automatically give the new buyers of the area the right to throw folks out because there are existing lease agreements. So a negotiation must take place between the new buyer and the current tenants on either fulfilling that existing contract or coming to some mutual arrangement for that to end. And, you know, certainly, if we can be of assistance in working with companies, we also have a vibrant real estate brokerage community here in Greater Burlington, and we certainly want to see a successful transition as well.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Do we have other comments from the audience?
To answer your question, Shane, Jeff Davis, 1826 Osborne. I've, when I first heard about the project, I went out to Fairway and talked to everyone that's out there. Then I went and did research, and we've got enough room for everybody to move. So, you know, I, myself, thinking of this, you know, why didn't Weingard, and this may be a good question that you can answer for, the shell building, why didn't, what was wrong?
Jeff, I need to...
Sorry. What was wrong with the shell building? Was it just not a good fit for him? Because it is an M1 zoning already, and we're taking commercial space that we're not ever going to get back. And, you know, I was just wondering why that shell building didn't fit. But to answer your question, the former Walmart, I walked that off and we can get four more 7,000-square-foot spots in there, or that property can be taken by Joanne Fabric. We've got the, where the Hobby Lobby is, we've got about 40,000 square in there, 30,000 square in there available. I've got the Blockbuster listed, and we've got 5,000 there. I've got the Old Liquor Depot listed, we've got 7,500 there. So we've got spaces for them, and it's going to be easy for them to do a transition. So it's going to be, it's a great move for, I think, Weingard. But my only question was, why didn't the already M1 zone vacant shell building work? Because I could just see that as a beautiful building for Weingard.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other comments from the audience? I'm sorry, Eric, we have two others that haven't spoken yet.
Leon Chehan, 1821 Mount Pleasant Street. I'm opposed to these projects, and I think there's a lot of misinformation out there. I just heard a number that we are supposedly creating jobs that pay $16.29 an hour. The last ad I saw for Weingard positions was $8.50 an hour. Folks, that's below the poverty wage. I'm going to say it again, as long as we continue to subsidize poverty wage employers, life isn't going to get better in Burlington.
In actuality, the agreement for the targeted jobs is, they guarantee, I believe it's 17 jobs are going to be above the average, which is $16.29. Is that correct, Jason?
Yeah, just for clarification, the county average wage today is $16.29 an hour. Of the 71 jobs projected to be created, 16 of that will be above the county average.
Yeah. Okay, Steve? Thank you, Jason.
So I could tie them up. I'm not going to be a regular, but I do want to support this project. I'm glad that Mr. Weingard chose to invest in our city. I'm actually glad he picked the site that he did because this is going to be a catalyst for new growth in other areas. Matter of fact, I'd like to compliment the creative thinking that I'm seeing tonight because there's a lot more that can come from this. I'd like to see the city become very involved with maybe the same kind of tax incentives for all these people who have to relocate, and I'd love to see it in our downtown. And I think the city has opportunities here to take this opportunity further into helping these people relocate. So my compliments for the creative thinking, and thank you for supporting it.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone else? Eric?
Eric Renteria, 907 High Street. Just one other thought on this was, as I looked at this project in total, one of the things that occurred to me is that it was, there is an opportunity to kill two birds with one stone, and that is that the Fairway Center businesses that are there now are going to need a place to go to. And what would be the chances that Weingard could acquire the property that the city has for sale on Roosevelt and move those businesses from the Fairway Center property over to the property on Highway 61, the old manor property, and develop that? And then that would then shift over to the, to the tax rolls as well. So while I understand, I'm not a real estate guy, but I understand that there are properties available. At the same time, what a fantastic opportunity to move a block of businesses into a property that is in desperate need of development. Just some good thought.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience wishing to speak on this issue? Seeing none. Counsel, what comments do we have?
Let's move ahead.
Well, I do want to say something about what Eric said, too. I think we have too many empty places where retail needs to go, and I think this will, you know, help that to have less, to no longer have Fairway Center, and those places have to relocate. That will help other owners of property that are looking for tenants. And so I do see what you say about, you know, having Weingard develop something, but I think that we have a better chance of having an outside developer looking at the Highway 61 site now when we have less commercial options. And this will, this will lower the number of options we have, so it would be like killing, you know, two birds with one stone if it makes that more desirable and that we now need more retail space.
Okay. Anything else, counsel? Were you satisfied here? Okay, we have a motion in a second. Kathleen?
Reed?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Now is the time. Thank you, the motion is carried. Time for comments from the audience. Stan, you're up.
Just a discussion on anything, right?
Yes, sir.
I have a question. I attended the work session last period, and I understood you to say that we're going to borrow $1 million for the dog pond, and they're going to pay us back.
I was going to say, why didn't we ever do that?
No.
Nope.
I don't, I don't, no.
Thank you.
Yeah. Oh, I, I get, now what? The animal shelter was, the, the animal shelter is on the capital improvements project, and it was listed for a million dollars, yes, but that doesn't mean we're going to borrow a million dollars to do it.
Because I thought you said the, the council understands we're going to borrow a million dollars...
No, 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 no. Anyone else? Thank you, Stan, by the way.
Wait, Eric?
I have something briefly, I just want to reiterate our conference of plan...
Oh, good.
...update. We did have a public meeting last Thursday at the library, very well attended. I want to thank everyone that was able to make that. Also wanted to reiterate, we do have an online survey at our Conference of Plan website, That's available through the end of the month, so we encourage everyone in the community to fill that out, because then, at the end of the month, it will no longer be there. You can, again, visit that at the website, there is a link from the city's website, or if you don't have internet access, you can pick up a hard copy at the Development Department office on the first floor, or call our office and we can mail one out to you. So I encourage everyone to go to that site and fill out the survey. You can also follow the meetings and the progress on that website. We do have our third Conference of Plan committee meeting this Thursday at 7:15 a.m. here in the council chambers, so it's open to the public, but I really encourage everyone to get involved in this Conference of Plan update and fill out the survey if you, if you're able to do that as well.
Okay. Thank you, Eric. Mr. Lutnik, do you have any updates or comments?
Just real quick, a couple of them, you've already seen the asphalt retention monies, we're all taking care of. The Riprap project is on hold, it's about 65 percent completed, because they're waiting on the completion of the boat docks, which are 50 percent completed, to get that whole project underway. Weather's not real conducive for, continue on that, but when the weather does break, those should be completed.
We're waiting on that for a while.
Yes.
A little while, unless we have a spring flood.
One thing after the...
No, we're not going to have one.
No, there's not no snow, there's not no snow, you have a flood.
Exactly. That's where we're at.
Okay, council, do you have any comments?
I do not have anything. I go now.
I have one, just to give you all a heads up, I was at the emergency management meeting last week. We are under obligation from the federal government to have a training session on emergency management, which fortunately, the assistant fire chief, deputy fire chief is Gene Wilkerson, is one of the certified trainers. So I've talked to him, and probably March, April sometime, we'll have to do a work session, and he'll come in and train us about emergency management procedures.
Interesting.
Roughly an hour and a half or so.
It's the incident command system that needs to be in effect anytime there's a disaster, and city council will be a big part of that.
Yeah.
It's good training.
And...
Do we have an underground bunker?
You can develop one, Becky.
City manager search, we had 65 applicants, which two of them have dropped because they've gotten employment somewhere else. So that's heading down the road, and remember, the 30th, we're going to meet to narrow our list down. Okay. Any other comments? I have a motion for adjournment.
I move that we adjourn. Second, Beth?
Kathleen?
Reed?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
We are adjourned, God bless you and God bless Burlington.
Should be able to.
Thank you very much.
Well, I could have said more than I needed to say.